Yes, it's 6:00 PM on Wednesday, December 9, 2020. We're calling this meeting to order. May we please have a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Henze. Councilmember Hubbard, do we see her? I still do not see her. I'll mark her absent for right now. Councilmember Mosca. Deputy Mayor Crand. And Mayor Blakespear. Record will show that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Hubbard.
Okay, and I invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have no special presentations tonight. Do we have oral communications?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have two. It looks like, let's see. The first is Michael Curran. Michael, you have three minutes, so as soon as you're ready, you can start.
Thank you very much. Before I begin, Mayor Blakespear, city council members, fellow business owners, I'd like to request an extra 30 seconds tonight. I'm a 20-year business owner in Encinitas on the important topic of these new safety orders.
Okay.
Mayor, thank you very much. My name is Michael Curran, and together with my wife and partner Susan, we're the legal and litigation team of Curran &amp; Curran Law here in Encinitas for 20 years. In 2018, we were honored by the North County Bar as Attorneys of the Year. We have a combined 50 years of employment, business, injury, aviation, government law, litigation experience. Pursuant to the United States and California constitutions, we, the people, give the government the power to govern, and we, the people, can and should take it back when it's abused. It can be abused, as it is now, for politics, tyranny, or distraction, and it's with that very fighting spirit that founded this great nation in 1776. For the past six months, we have advised our friends, clients, and businesspeople in our community, stay open and run your business as part of a constitutionally-protected, peaceful protest against unconstitutional and unfounded government orders. Know that every business in our community is essential to that businessperson and their employees. Many restaurants, salons, gyms, other small businesses are defying constitutional, defying, excuse me, constitutional orders, and we support them. Did an experienced lawyer just say violate the law? No, I did not. I said stand up against unconstitutional alleged safety orders that we've been subjected to for 10 months now. The regional metrics that are being used for this latest order of Governor Newsom is skewed. He has put us into the SoCal region because alleging ICU beds are perhaps not sufficient in the SoCal region, but that's not the case in San Diego County, and that's certainly not the case in our Encinitas community. We have never actually had a pandemic. Don't get me wrong, it's serious, and we're taking appropriate safety measures, but we have responsible citizens, and we should let them do their business and manage their own lives. For those of you who say, well, even one death is too many, if that's the only concern, let's lower the speed limit here in Encinitas to 10 miles an hour. Everywhere, because if one lost life is too many, we use hunt/lose hundreds of people in San Diego to car accidents and motorcycle accidents each year. We should also outlaw motorcycles and cyclists because we lose many of them in our community each year. So that's really not the real concern. The governor's office and the county have threatened to take action against offenders who cease who, and send them cease and desist letters, fines, arrests, and all that. But already, as you probably well know, the Riverside, Ventura, Orange County Sheriff's Department have announced they will not be blackmailed. They are not going to serve as the muscle to enforce these new stay-in-and-shut-down orders. And just today in LA, a judge ruled, actually yesterday now, that the orders are arbitrary, which means they're not constitutional, they're not narrowly tailored, which is the requirement if you're going to try to change the Constitution. The City of Encinitas, you find folks, and the Encinitas Sheriff should follow their lead. Encourage residents to act responsibly, protect themselves and their family, but get back to living and enjoying their lives. Citing or fining restaurants, gyms, and other small businesses for making a living, don't do it. We wish you all a merry Christmas, happy holidays, and a happy and safe New Year with your friends and families. I thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Elena Thompson. Elena, did you want to speak during oral communication?
Yes, please.
Okay, you can start when you're ready.
Thank you. Hello, and welcome to the new and old city council and mayor going forward in your new term. I'm here to speak about your articulated mode shift, mobility, and climate action strategies and goals. I'd also like to help the city transform ongoing tragedies and difficulties into some bold new plans going forward. And finally, this term. There's no disputing that we have the most mobility-driven city council in the history of Encinitas. However, as a recreational cyclist, walker, and bike and pedestrian advocate, I have the following five observations that I hope help you in your new term. Number one, if there was a state of mobility survey in Encinitas today, it's my belief that Encinitas would receive a C grade at best, possibly worse. Our bike and walking networks are lacking, nonexistent, and what we do have is downright unsafe. Number two, there's a significant disconnect between what the council says they want to do, this council, mobility-wise in Encinitas, and what is actually accomplished. Things are not getting done or are done poorly, not in the areas of the most needs, such as our east-west and north-south connectors or along primary transportation routes. Other areas are not maintained and updated when there's new development. Plans are started and not finished or funded, start late, and key sections are canceled. Number three, the city has no full-time mobility expert or mobility czar or budget to fulfill on mobility and mode shift strategy. At present, traffic engineering does some work, public works other work, rarely coordinating, even talking, misstriping, and missing significant opportunities to get things done right, time and time again. Number four, the climate action plans aim to get people to use bicycles and travel less in cars to reduce greenhouse gases is great, but our bike and ped network is sorely lacking for this, downright dangerous to support these lofty goals, including bike share. Number five, the City of Encinitas currently encourages high-speed vehicular travel with excessively wide vehicular travel lanes and high-speed limits, serving as host to cut-through traffic, making biking and walking in Encinitas unsafe and scaring people away from true mode shift. Whatever happened to Vision Zero? In sum, I would encourage this new council to have a new and revised game plan going forward. Your chief responsibility as elected officials is public safety. Please do not lose sight of that. And on a final note, albeit the most important point I'll leave you with tonight is that my friend, an experienced cyclist on a bike ride in Lucadia a week ago, was tragically killed on his bike. I'm sorry. This should not be happening if this council is sincere about wanting to create mode shift and enhance mobility and protect public safety. Please, you have to start with a new plan, and you have to listen and act. Thank you for your time and service. Merry Christmas.
That concludes oral communication.
Okay, thank you. The next item is our report from closed session.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. This is Leslie Devaney, City Attorney, and members of the public. The council met in closed session today under existing litigation, Service Point versus Encinitas. The city council discussed the status of this matter with legal counsel, and there is no reportable action. On item two, initiation of litigation, the council voted unanimously 5 to 0 to initiate litigation against Russ and John Kubart for illegally operating a short-term rental. There had been a number of complaints on this property. The owners have existing code violations against their property and owe occupancy taxes. In addition, they failed to get a permit to legally operate that short-term rental. Item three, significant exposure to litigation on one of the matters. The city council discussed the potential legal matter with legal counsel, and there is no reportable action on that item. On the second item of significant exposure to litigation, the council discussed the potential legal issues on that matter with legal counsel, and there is no reportable action. And that concludes my report out from closed session.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any changes to the posted agenda?
Before I get to that, I'll just note that Councilmember Hubbard did join the meeting. So all members of the city council are present. There are no changes to the posted agenda. And moving to the consent calendar, item 8H has been pulled from the consent calendar by Mayor Blakespear.
Okay, thank you. I would entertain a motion on the remainder.
Understood.
Then we'll get ready to vote. Councilmember Henze?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Crand?
Yes.
And Mayor Blakespear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move to item 8H.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I pulled this item. This item is the report on the financial results for fiscal year 2019, 2020. And everything looks good in here, except for, I wanted to raise the issue of the elimination of our prepayment of pension debt. Since I've been on the city council, we have always funded that, and it started with Councilmember Lisa Schaefer, who suggested a 5% amount of the unassigned fund balance at the end of each fiscal year. And our current unassigned fund balance is 3.4 million. So 5% of that would be 160,000. And, or it's actually 160,645. But about three or so years ago, to avoid variability, we decided not to go with 5%. We decided to go with 500,000 each year. That would go to our unfunded pension liability. And so I think what I'd like to do today is to suggest that we do pay this. I think one of the reasons for that is that when you look ahead to our unfunded pension liability responsibilities, we are always able to cover them, so, which is good, because we don't, at any point, end up in a structural deficit. But we do end up not having any money for our capital program because in some outer years, we do have really high pension payments. And so prepaying this responsibility, I see this as part of our being fiscally responsible as a city, and also looking ahead to the next generation and saying, in the future, they're going to want to buy and pay for capital projects, just like we do, because we have a capital project budget of, I think it was 63 million. So we have a lot of money that we're spending on our capital projects. But this pension liability is important, that we chip away at it, and as a relatively prosperous city, we're able to do that without feeling the pain. So we're not having to cut a sheriff's deputy or not pave our roads because we want to pay, or we need to pay our pension debt. And so, I would also like to make sure that this, I would like this to come back to us as a policy discussion, to have it be just part of what the budgeting is, so that either 5% or 500,000 is part of the normal city operation, so that when we get a document like this on consent, that's the financial results for the year, that it already includes that, so that we don't have to have a conversation individually brought up each year that addresses this. So I'll just give a couple more things that I think are worth noting about this end-of-year report. So it's really good in many ways, because it says, one of the things it says is that the final unassigned fund balance is above projections by 9.7 million. And that's because, if you recall, you know, we changed our projections because of COVID, and then things have not been as dire as we feared. Certainly, the future is uncertain, and I understand why the staff was recommending that we be really cautious. I think it's really important that we're really cautious, but this is something that is as important as the other things that we're funding, even on this consent agenda, like increasing our mowing contract and our maintenance budget and that kind of thing. So if we were to, I'll just give the council, like, the two suggestions, and I'm happy to have staff weigh in here, too, if Pam, our city manager, would like to. But if we did 5% toward our prepaying our pension, as I said, that would be 160,000. So what that would mean is our unassigned fund balance would go from 3.4 million to 3.3 million. If we did 500,000 toward our prepayment of pension, which we've done for the last previous several years, our unassigned fund balance would go from 3.4 million to 2.9 million. So that would, of course, leave us less that's unassigned. But I would like to do, at minimum, the 5%. And I feel that that's at least, that's doing something, it's continuing our tradition, and I would like to request that what comes back to us is a policy that makes this automatic each year. So with that, I'll go to my council colleagues. So Councilmember Mosca.
Yes, no, I agree with that. In fact, I think we all agree with it, because it's been the policy of our city council for some time. We know that, you know, obviously, things are difficult right now, and we're seeing the dip in sales tax and other revenues going down. But what we know for sure is that the liability for pensions is just going to continue to go up, and that by making, prepaying some of this liability, pension liability has helped us out and will continue to help us out in the future. And so I continue to be, you know, an advocate of paying this down. I know that with some of our other organizations and bodies and committees that we belong to, such as our wastewater authority and facility, we've gone to 100% paying down the pension liability. Now, I'm not suggesting that we pay down 100% at this moment, though, you know, a policy that looks somewhat like that is pretty prudent. But I'm not suggesting 100%. But I do think that we should continue moving forward on a policy of at least 5% each fiscal year. So the unaside fund balance, at least 5% of that would go toward that pension liability, above and beyond what we already pay annually.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, that's an important, I'll go to Councilmember Crand here, but that's an important clarification that I just want to underline that you just said, which is, of course, we're paying our pension obligation when we are sent a bill, as we are every year. So that, of course, payment happens, but this is prepayment of pension obligation. So this is in addition to what's already required. Councilmember Crand.
Yeah, and I appreciate you making this point. I did think it was a policy, maybe it was unwritten policy. When Lisa proposed it, it was embraced by everybody on the council then, and it has been ever since. I get that we're in an entirely different economic time, and I appreciate that, you know, the cautiousness with which staff has made this, you know, had put this staff report together. But I think that there are a lot of things, when you look at the report, that are, you know, laudable, and we're in pretty good shape considering what's been happening with the economy. So I don't think now is the time to really, you know, in this particular area, not continue with the previous policy. So I will be, you know, I'm in support of what it is that you're suggesting.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Henze, did you want to say something?
Yes, I am also supportive of this, and I think it became a priority of mine when I kept hearing this as a concern of residents, time and again. And my response was always that we have this priority in place to prepay at $500,000 a year. So I would look to staff and my colleagues to decide if they think it should be 5% this year or 500,000, as it's been in years past, but I'm supportive of this idea as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hubbard?
Mayor, I totally support it. My concern is that if we go to 5% this year versus 500,000, that's a very, very big difference. And I think we want to make sure that that doesn't become a habit, because there's always going to be other places to spend the money. So is there some, I'm wondering if there's some way to put a rule in that says when you have over X, you automatically do 500,000, otherwise you do 5%. It's just a thought, but I'm always concerned when you take something down that's like a payment, like we think of this as an Ires, should be done every year.
Right, yeah, it's a good idea. It's the pay yourself first idea. And maybe staff can come back, when they come back with the policy, they can have a recommendation on that. I'll call on our city manager. Would you like to say anything?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. We absolutely can put together, in fact, what Councilmember Hubbard is, what we were talking about today as the staff of, you know, what made us feel uncomfortable this year to not recommend the 500,000. I think, either way, even if you put in the 500,000 for this year, if there was something that we needed to come back at mid-year and change something, it obviously is something very important to the council and the city, and I feel as though we really were just looking at it from the standpoint that we wanted to see how things would go mid-year. So might I suggest that maybe we do what Councilmember Hubbard suggested, that we bring back a policy, but for now, that would do if this, then that. But for now, maybe if you did the 5%, and if mid-year looks like our numbers looked great for this last quarter of 2020 in terms of sales tax revenues, et cetera, we could still come back and make the additional payment. But frankly, in terms of the amount, it's not going to hurt us much either way if you feel like you just want to do the 500,000 right now.
I have to say, I really liked the idea of getting under 3 million. Having that number go to 2 million something.
You like it, or you don't like it?
I did like it. I was sort of pained that we wouldn't get there.
Well, but just to clarify that number, what I was saying is that that's our city unassigned fund balance, so we actually don't want it to be low, we want it to be high. That's not the amount of pension obligation we owe.
I misunderstood, okay.
Pension liability is much greater. We wish it was only 2 billion.
Okay, sorry.
It's, yeah, it's several times more than that. So if you wanted to do the 5% tonight, and then you could make sure that we bring back as part of the budget, a policy document, it's very good policy to do something like that. It also provides staff really good guidance, but also gives us that little bit of buffer if we have a weird year like this with COVID and we're not quite sure. I mean, this is really hard for everyone. Nobody knows how to project revenues in this particular circumstance that we're in. So, but we're happy to bring back and, you know, pivot whatever way you need us to tonight.
Okay, that works for me, that we do it like you just suggested. So we'll do the 5%, and we'll look at this last, the last quarter of the year and see how it ended up, and make a decision in the future about this last part, if we should go up to 500,000.
Yeah, I would just recommend that it actually not just look at that last fiscal year, but that we actually put together a policy, as we were saying before, because I think that guards against what Councilmember Hubbard was talking about, where we kind of creep back to, like, you know, perhaps just 5% when we all really think that 500,000 was our policy, and that was really a worthwhile kind of prepayment.
Yeah, that was, I think that was the idea, was that there would be a policy that would come back to us. So does that seem clear, then, Council, City Manager?
That seems clear. If you, we have our direction, and we'll be bringing something back to you, yes.
Okay, so should I make that into a motion?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay, so, just to clarify, so the motion is that we're going to go with 5% now, and then reevaluate going to half a million, but also having a policy that has certain triggers that says it would be half a million unless certain things are met, or other way you write the policy, so that it's driving toward the half a million. Okay, thank you.
I have one comment on the motion, but kind of connected to the motion, but not, which is that I think within, I don't know if it was within the Sandiguita Water District or within the city, we had talked about hiring some sort of person, I forget their title, but somebody that crunches the numbers and really tells us what the sweet spot is in terms of prepayment is, and if we pay 400,000, 500,000, this is the difference that it makes in the future, and that they were going to basically be able to do all that amortization and tell us exactly where we ought to be. If we wanted to be at, you know, say, 75% or 80% funded, you know, this is how much you need to be doing. And so I don't know if that was within the Water District or the city, but would love to see that at some point.
Well, I think, maybe the Finance Director could do that, because I know we've had this conversation before about whether to hire an outside company to do this analysis, and then maybe that could be part of coming up with the policy, would be a little bit of analysis around that. I think that's a great idea. Okay, well, let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, Councilmember Henze?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Crand?
Yes.
And Mayor Blakespear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. We can now move to item 10A.
Okay.
And we do have seven speakers on this item.
Okay, let's go ahead and have our staff report, and then we'll hear the speakers.
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This evening, we are here to discuss amendments to the City of Encinitas Municipal Code for Density Bonus Regulations. Tonight's staff is introducing draft ordinance number 202009 for consideration of the city council. In accordance with Program 2D of the city's 2013-2021 Housing Amendment, the city will review any future amendments to state density bonus law to ensure that its local ordinance remains consistent with state law. The proposed amendments to the density bonus regulations within the Encinitas Municipal Code are to update and provide consistency with state law. The city's local density bonus ordinance was last amended in 2017. Since that time, state density bonus law has been amended a total of six times by six different laws during the last three years. This item has been presented previously three times this year to the Planning Commission, first on May 21st, then again on June 18th, and lastly, on November 19th, 2020. The proposed ordinance provides amendments to implement recent changes to state density bonus law, incorporating Planning Commission recommendations that were requested at the June 18th meeting and made at the November 19th, 2020 meeting, and to consider a housing program to increase density bonus to create additional affordable housing as an alternative to the 50% density bonus provisions provided by AB 2345. We will now move on to the proposed amendments within the draft density bonus ordinance. The following proposed amendments are to make the local density bonus ordinance consistent with state law while also providing clarification in the code. The applicability of density bonus for a development project of five or more residential units, including mixed-use developments. The eligibility of density bonus has been expanded to include housing developments for seniors, foster youth, disabled persons, homeless persons, and college students. A requirement that an applicant shall provide documentation for all incentives or concessions requested at the time of their submittal. State density bonus law previously referred to incentives, only referred to incentives, and now includes concessions as a part of the requirement of documentation for a submittal requesting density bonus. Density bonus parking regulations modifies the wording from parking reductions to parking ratios, and the additional provisions include... and the additional provisions include a 100% affordable project possibility if an applicant does apply for it. The city is required to grant an 80% increase in density for projects which are completely affordable or also 100% affordable products. If located within a half a mile of a major transit stop, the city may not impose any maximum density limits. Projects would also be entitled to a maximum height increase of up to three stories or 33 feet. The Planning Commission requested the addition of definitions that are consistent with state law pursuant to Government Code Section 65915, which staff has incorporated into the draft ordinance into Section 30.16.020C2 for maximum allowable residential density, maximum allowable gross residential density, and specific adverse impacts, which has been presented to the Planning Commission at the November 19th, 2020 meeting. At the November 19th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission modified the definition of maximum gross residential density to be based on net acreage instead of gross acreage. At the November 10, 2020 Density Bonus Public Presentation, a participant stated during public comments that the neighboring four jurisdictions of Carlsbad, Delmar, Oceanside, and Solana Beach all utilize gross acreage for density bonus calculations, which prompted city staff to determine if the neighboring four cities utilize gross acreage or net acreage for density bonus calculations. City staff found that each jurisdiction utilizes net acreage, although it is important to note Delmar has not processed density bonus project. Staff has also reached out to the City of San Diego, which also uses net acreage. The proposed modification by the Planning Commission was based on the consistent practice of other jurisdictions in the region. The city has not had any policy previously about maximum allowable gross residential density to, is to be, or how it is to be calculated. The Planning Commission previously discussed the need for additional application requirements within the city's density bonus regulations. Staff has incorporated the Planning Commission recommendation to add density bonus application requirements within the density bonus ordinance. This includes a description of the proposed housing development and a site plan, elevations, sections, and floor plans with the total number and location of all dwelling units, affordable units, and density bonus units proposed. The addition of this recommendation is to clarify the density bonus application requirements within the municipal code instead of within the handouts provided by the city. The Planning Commission requested incorporating additional provisions for reasonable documentation when a density bonus project requests an incentive or concession. Staff has incorporated language into Section 30.16.020C4C2B of the draft ordinance. The Planning Commission also requested changing the wording to include in the draft text from substantial evidence to reasonable documentation. Language to be incorporated is this shall be included as a middle of a financial analysis or report providing reasonable documentation that the requested concessions incentives will, one, result in identifiable and actual cost reductions and are required in, or, and are required in order to provide affordable housing costs. Staff has incorporated, in addition to the Planning Commission recommendation, that the cost of reviewing any required financial information, including but not limited to the actual cost to the city for hiring a consultant to review the financial data, shall be borne by the applicant. Similarly, to the request for additional documentation requirements, for incentives and concessions, the Planning Commission requested incorporating additional provisions for reasonable documentation when a density bonus project requests a waiver. Staff has incorporated language into the section within the draft ordinance. The language incorporated is that the developer must demonstrate that each development standard for which a waiver is requested would physically preclude the construction of the housing development at the density or with the incentive or concession permitted. Reasonable documentation consists of at least a site plan and elevations of the proposed project with the required development standards overlaid showing the physical limitations that preclude the density. The documentation shall demonstrate the physical limitation at each location and why other alternatives are not physically feasible without reducing the density permitted. In addition to the Planning Commission request for documentation requirements for a requested waiver, the commissioners also requested staff to clarify when a waiver can be requested. Staff has incorporated language into the draft ordinance that states waivers may be requested for projects that exceed the maximum allowable residential density. This provision should further implement the intent of waivers, which is to modify development standards when needed to accommodate density increases and incentives and concessions. The Planning Commission requested modifying design standards of affordable units. Staff has incorporated a provision which would only require the affordable unit shall be of at least 75% of the average per footage of all market rate units in the housing development with the same bedroom count. The unit mix based on bedroom count provided for affordable units shall be proportional to the unit mix based on bedroom count provided for the market rate units. The council may want to consider limiting the size requirements to multifamily developments, which will later be discussed. The Planning Commission also requested to incorporate prescriptive language to the dispersion of affordable units throughout the housing development. This language would help to further ensure application of density bonus regulations and to prevent clustering of affordable units into only certain areas on a project site. Affordable units shall be dispersed throughout the housing development on each floor, elevation, and section of the buildings and throughout the site, thus avoiding the consolidation of affordable units into one building or a specific geographic area on a project site. Clarifying language was added at the November 19, 2020 Planning Commission meeting that exempts the dispersion requirements for affordable units that are financed with low-income tax credits or consist, or consist of affordable senior housing. These provisions assist to affirmatively further fair housing by ensuring that affordable units serve families and are comparable to market rate units. AB 2345 was signed into law on September 28th, 2020. AB 2345 made additional changes to state density bonus law that will go into effect on January 1st, 2021. For the city's density bonus ordinance to remain compliant with state law, additional modifications are required to the proposed amendments presented to the Planning Commission on the May 28th, 2020, and the June 18th, 2020, which were then heard at the November 19th meeting. I will provide an overview of the following slides for the changes to state density bonus law that were made a part of AB 2345. Assembly Bill 2345 proposes a number of amendments that will go into effect on January 1st, 2021. It will modify how a housing development is determined to be within one-half mile of a major transit stop. The existing law states that an unobstructed access to a major transit stop from the development must be present in order to be considered within one-half of a mile. Affected January 1, 2021, located within one-half mile of a major transit stop shall be measured from any point on a proposed housing development to a major transit stop, including any parking lot owned by a transit authority or other local agency operating the major transit stop. Assembly Bill 2345 further modifies the onsite parking requirement for a housing development upon the request of the developer. The city shall not require a particular parking ratio inclusive of parking for persons with a disability and guests that exceeds the following ratios represented on this slide. The key change that has been made within state law is a reduction of parking for two- and three-bedroom units from two parking spaces per unit to 1.5 parking spaces per unit, which will become effective January 1, 2021. Included in Assembly Bill 2345 was an increase in maximum density bonus from 35%, which is effective today, to a maximum of 50%. In exchange for the increased maximum density bonus of 50%, a housing development would also be required to include additional affordable units as a part of their proposed project. The current slide illustrates the affordable unit requirements and corresponding maximum density bonus allowed for as of today and as of January 1, 2021. As of January 2021, if a developer provides 15% of the proposed units for very low-income households, or 24% for low-income households, or 44% for moderate-income households, they wouldn't be entitled to a 50% density bonus as shown on this slide. Assembly Bill 2345 reduces the threshold required to qualify for incentives and concessions. For example, the current threshold to qualify for two incentives or concessions is 20% for lower-income households. But effective on January 1, 2021, the threshold will be reduced to 17%. Further, the current threshold to qualify for three incentives or concessions is 30% for lower-income households. Effective January 1, 2021, the threshold will be reduced to 24%. Alternative provisions are allowed by AB 2345. If the city adopts an ordinance or housing program that incentivizes the development of affordable housing by allowing for density bonuses that exceed those currently in effect, it is not required to implement the increased densities and incentives or concessions as in AB 2345. Therefore, if the city adopts an ordinance allowing density bonuses higher than the current 35% maximum, it will not be required to implement the amendments contained in AB 2345 with respect to the increase in density bonus of 50% maximum or the lower threshold for incentives and concessions. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the maximum density bonus of a 39% with a, or also the 40%. So it's there, we'll share that on the next slide. If the city of Encinitas does not adopt its own increase in bonus density above 35% before January 1, 2021, that allowed a bonus density shall be 50% pursuant to Government Code Section 65915. Important to note that the city is still required to implement the provisions of AB 2345 for determining the distance of, from a major transit stop and for the parking ratios by state law. This is the Planning Commission recommendations broken down for each level of affordability, which are also been shown in the three tables on the slide for low-income, very-low, and for moderate-income units. The Planning Commission modified the percentage density bonus provided for 40% or moderate units from 40 to 39%. The modification made was to provide consistent interval increases in density bonus for moderate-income units. You can see that reflected on the table on the right in the red at the bottom of the column. Reasons for proposed alternative housing program, AB 2345 provides very large increases in market rate units for only small increases in the percentage of affordable units. Encinitas has already received applications for enough market rate units to meet its entire 2021 through 2029 arena for above-moderate income units that needs more affordable units. The rate in which the City of Encinitas receives density bonus applications greatly differs from the City of San Diego, which, which is the city that AB 2345 was modeled after. The City of San Diego created the increased density bonus as an incentive for developers to utilize, which was, which has resulted in the creation of affordable units. The City of Encinitas has processed dozens of density bonus applications utilizing the existing incentives available by state law. In addition, the city is concerned, or, in addition, the city is concerned that allowing a 50% increase in density for only 15% very-low income or 24% low-income units will remove the benefits provided to affordable housing developers by AB 1763, which allowed an 80% bonus, but requires 100% affordable units. Additionally, the Turner Center report found little evidence that adopting AB 2345 would be attractive to the local development community. The Turner Center report can be found as an attachment to this staff report. Title 30 of the Municipal Code is a component of the city's local coastal plan. Therefore, any amendments warrant a local coastal program amendment, or also known as an LCPA, subject to review and approval by the California Coastal Commission. A public notice of availability opened a six-week public review period on May 1st, 2020, and a second public notice of availability was reissued on October 30th, 2020 due to the additional changes made by state law and the requested modifications by the Planning Commission. The public notice of availability is required to lapse prior to any final action being taken by the City Council on an LCPA. If the City Council provides, or approves the LCPA, the proposed amendment will be submitted to the California Coastal Commission for review and approval. The draft ordinance introduced this evening is next scheduled to be heard for adoption by the City Council on December 16th, 2020. If adopted, the city staff will prepare a Zone Sex Amendment, or will prepare the Zone Sex Amendment, which includes the local coastal plan amendment to be sent to the California Coastal Commission for their final review. Staff, the staff recommendation is to adopt a housing program that is with the increased density shown in section, in section, and shown in the section within the draft ordinance and introduce ordinance 202009 as recommended approval by the Planning Commission or with modifications provided by the City Council. This concludes the presentation portion of the proposed amendments to the draft ordinance 202009, and staff is available for any discussion and further questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that detailed presentation. Let me take a look to see if any of my colleagues would like to speak. Let me see, okay, Councilmember Mosca.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, staff, for your presentation. I just want to confirm something that was really key that you just said, or maybe highlighted or underlined it, which is that this City Council has never had a discussion about a policy on the matter of net versus gross, gross density. And so this is the first time that we're actually looking at this and the first time we would actually have a policy on this matter. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, one, one question I had was, you said that we've processed dozens of density bonus projects. Do you know how many?
We have processed 32 density bonus projects in the city.
Wow, okay. Councilmember Crans?
Yes, thank you. And with regard to the jurisdictions nearby that were surveyed as to how they calculate, whether it's net or gross, do we know whether those jurisdictions have written policies on how they do that? Or is it part of their density bonus ordinance? Is there, what, what is the mechanism that they use to establish the, the use of net instead of gross?
Staff made contact with each city individually and spoke with senior-level staff at each organization. Two of the organizations, one being Carlsbad and the other being Solana Beach, both have it explicitly written into their local ordinance that they utilize net as their calculation basis. The city of Del Mar explicitly stated that their code for density bonus is out of date and is not compliant or consistent with state law. However, that their internal policy, if they had received an application, would be to process it utilizing a net as the calculation. And this similarly, that is close to what was given as feedback from the city of Oceanside is that it is codified, however, they also have internal policies that require them to utilize net.
And the, the process of getting to the city of Encinitas becoming compliant with state housing law regarding our housing element, where we had, we meet our statutory obligations regarding high-density units, which is R thirty and above, was very painful. And one of the, one of the outcomes that we knew was going to happen is that as all the conversations took place regarding which parcels to upzone, that there was this, this issue of density bonus being invoked by the developer. And, you know, what the impacts of that would be on a project that we were upzoning that particular parcel. So, you know, we use numbers that were based upon state law to calculate the number of units we anticipated would, would be yielded by a project on a particular parcel. And when we were calculating those numbers, what was the, what was the HCD requirement for how that would be calculated? Was that net or gross, or how, how was that done?
The numbers that are provided in the housing element for the R thirty sites is based on the minimum requirement, which is twenty-five dwelling units per net acre.
Okay, and so, for example, on the Baldwin and Sun properties, which are on Quail Gardens Drive on the, near the intersection of NCS Boulevard, for the purposes of our housing element update, we use the number two-hundred-and-twenty-five units. And their project that they've come forward with has four-hundred-and-eighty-three units. Is that based upon the difference between calculating the housing element parcels based upon net and the way that we are currently calculating density bonus projects?
They didn't, I wouldn't be able to respond exactly, but the specifics of density bonus is that we currently is based on the gross acreage. And so the total number of units, the base density is based on gross, and then their request for a density bonus, if it's thirty-five percent, would be thirty-five percent on top of that base density.
And I think we have six projects, and I think all of them that have come forward out of the, out of the parcels that were part of the housing element update. And out of all of those projects, it appears that they're all being processed using density bonus law?
Yes, they're all using density bonus law. Six of the seven are using gross acreage. As they're based, to calculate base density.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's go to the public speakers. Is the city clerk working on that? Is there anybody who knows what's going on?
We're gonna go check with.
I'll check with Kathy.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, there we are. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Angelie Kalanog. Angelie, are you there?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you start, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Blake Spear and council members. My name is Angelie Kalanog, Policy Manager for Circulate San Diego. On behalf of Circulate, whose mission is to create excellent mobility choices and vibrant, healthy neighborhoods, we respectfully request that you reject city staff's current density bonus ordinance proposal. The current proposal would result in lower incentives to build affordable homes than if the council takes no action and allows AB two, three, four, five to be implemented. Circulate was a cosponsor of AB two, three, four, five, which is a proven policy solution that has resulted in more deed-restricted and affordable homes in the city of San Diego and can do the same in Encinitas. Affordable housing bonus programs like AB two, three, four, five encourage mixed-income homes, promote equity and inclusion, and can also reduce greenhouse gas emissions by allowing more people to live near public transit and encourage an alternative to driving for their commutes. As we continue to find innovative ways to solve the housing shortage throughout the state, it is important that every city do its part to comply with state law and ensure that more homes are built at all income levels. However, the current proposal before you tonight undermines incentives to build affordable homes. We encourage staff to, we encourage you to reject staff's current proposals to prevent future enforcement actions against the city, demonstrate a good faith commitment to inclusion, and ultimately allow for more affordable homes in Encinitas. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adrian Hall. Adrian, you can start when you are ready. You'll have three minutes. Just need to unmute, Adrian. Adrian, if you can hear me, you need to unmute your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You can start when you're ready.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to, to support the, the net housing, not, not the buildable acreage, not the gross hous- housing. That was really my point. And that's really all I have to say.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Next speaker is Dolores Welte. Dolores, you can start when you are ready.
Yes, I too support the net acreage. This, the terrain here is diverse and beautiful, and we should protect it through using only net acreage. I have a letter that I have written and sent to this, to the council, and I support what is in it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Camille Perkins. Camille, you can start when you are ready.
Camille Perkins, Leavenham. Thank you, City Council, for your attention tonight. This draft bonus density ordinance needs significant revision. This ordinance applies equally to five different communities. Tonight, I'm speaking to impacts to Leavenham areas zoned rural residential, one dwelling unit per two, four, and eight acres. This ordinance does not work for low-density rural residential areas. That's because this ordinance contains many provisions not mandated by state law, adding new constraints to development. The ordinance in front of you tonight violates our general plan housing element that states the city will decrease constraints to development. Encinitas needs to revise its density bonus ordinance and remove development constraints. These constraints include, number one, restoring density bonus calculation based on gross acreage. These changes were made by the city, the Planning Commission, against the advice of the city attorney. The city doesn't need more lawsuits. Using net acreage to calculate bonus density makes no sense in Leavenham. In Leavenham, rural residential acres zoned one dwelling per two and four acres, per the city's housing element, they think that you can only get four units on nearly fifty acres. So even though you're zoned one house per two to four acres, the city is saying that you get one house per twelve-point-four acres. That's ridiculous and out of character with adjacent neighbors who are all on one and two-acre parcels. And remember, any habitat conserved has to be provided a cash endowment. So in addition to preserving more than half their property, a recent project paid a cash endowment of two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars per lot. How can any affordable housing be constructed with these exactions? Number two, remove the requirements that affordable housing be equivalent to market-rate housing, because that doesn't work in Leavenham. Because of so many city regulations and exactions, Leavenham homes have to be large and expensive to recoup costs. This ordinance would require the construction of affordable homes that are four to six thousand square foot, five to seven bedrooms on big lots. Let's be clear, big houses cost big money to construct and big money to own. It is no benefit to a low-income owner to have a huge house they cannot afford to maintain or heat. Replacing the roof alone, which could happen every twenty-five years, could cost more than affordable owner's gross income, let alone paying for insurance, utilities, landscaping, maintenance, repairs, which are all more expensive on a big multimillion-dollar house. The monthly water bill can be almost a hundred-and-twenty dollars per month before a drop of water is used because big houses have big meters. It's far better to allow smaller homes on smaller lots that low-income owners can afford to maintain. Number three, as drafted, these requirements cannot be waived. At the very least, staff, Planning Commission, and City Council need to retain discretion to approve sensible projects and sensible homes. This is critical in Leavenham that's different from the rest of Encinitas. Thank you very, very much.
Is that the end of public speakers?
I'm waiting for Juliana Maxim.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to speak to the amendment regarding the use of net versus gross acreage. And I'd like to ask that you please consider, following the Planning Commission's recommendation, to use net acreage as basis for calculating the density bonus granted to a developer. In this, the city would follow established practices. Cities of San Diego, Solana Beach, Del Mar, Carlsbad, Oceanside, all use net acreage in applying the density bonus law. You would also be staying well within California law. Your own excellent counsel Barbara Couts has allowed that using net acreage is a viable applica- application of the density bonus law. Using net acreage instead of gross is also consistent with the city's previous analyses of the R thirty sites, such as the environmental analysis and the adequate sites analysis, both of which use net in calculating and proposing models for development. A net acreage interpretation can mitigate some of the effects of developments that layer R thirty upzoning by right development and density bonus, one on top of each other. The grotesque Goodson Malk project, perhaps the clearest example in the history of Encinitas of what deregulated development looks like, uses gross acreage to claim two-hundred-and-eighty-three units. A net acreage interpretation would reduce the size of this project to two-hundred-and-forty-three, a small but nonetheless important adjustment to a project that has ballooned to almost twice the size of the original proposal. Finally, it is worth observing that unbridled densification, although done in the name of affordable housing, has yielded much, much fewer low-income housing than anticipated, far from any public transit, while also threatening to do irreversible damage to historical communities. It is high time that you objectively evaluate the efficacy of the R thirty by right density bonus policy triad in attempt to reduce its harms. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Doyle. Kevin, you can start speaking when you are ready. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, council. I really don't have a lot to say. I, you know, I've spent many, many hours on this ordinance. So I'm speaking tonight as a private individual, not in my position as a planning commissioner, but where we, Joe, I think you hit the nail on the head earlier. It's like, we have no ordinance. We have no official statement from either the Planning Commission or the council on just whether we do get gross or net. And here we are finally crafting our ordinance, and it's, it's just, it's a sensible solution. I think you've all, I've gotten that, listening to everyone else here. And so here is our first chance to craft a true ordinance that will protect our town. I mean, I look at some of the, I spoke about the Sage Canyon site, which is five-point-two-three acres gross, but only two-point-four net. And there, when we calculate the, the density bonus, if we were to do this as gross, it would go from sixty units, as stated in our specific, or our housing element, to two-hundred-and-twenty-two units using density bonus. And from that, we would gain twelve affordable houses. So it's just reasonable. I think, I don't really need to say very much tonight. I'm, I have such faith in you all, and I think we're gonna do the right thing here. I think we've got a defensible situation. I think people will, of course, the BIA will, or certain others may object to this, this interpretation of ours, but it is very defensible. And I think now is our chance to nail this down and do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our final speaker is Elena Thompson. Elena, you can start when you're ready.
Hello. The citizens, voters, and taxpayers, I believe, would expect this council to vote in agreement with its own Encinitas Planning Commission and staff recommendation for net buildable acreage. Please listen to your own staff and commissions, not outside interests. As has been stated, voting for net is with consistent, is consistent with state law. There's no reason to go with higher numbers. Go with net. Since the city incorporated in nineteen eighty-six, it's been the duty of all elected officials to uphold land use for the benefit of the constituents in Encinitas and to protect community character. Please demonstrate to the community that you stand behind the city charter and with your citizens, your own planning commission, and your own staff. To do otherwise might raise the question as to who you're actually working for. Thank you.
Thank you, Elena, and that does conclude public comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you to the people who called in and offered their public comment. It's always good to hear, and we also did receive a lot of correspondence over email about that topic. I wanted to follow up on the issue that was brought up by Camille about the smaller homes, and I think you referenced it in the staff report. The issue of the affordable units being seventy-five percent, and I think there was a suggestion that maybe that should be in multifamily only, which would basically be like in an apartment complex, but, but then if it was a bigger, a kind of large home development, that you wouldn't end up with a very large affordable home, like a four-thousand-square-foot affordable home, which would be difficult for somebody on an affordable income to maintain.
That's correct. They, that is an option that we did present in the staff report, and we did prepare text in the, if you didn't want to discuss that text. And it would be that seventy-five percent would apply only in multifamily development, and that for single-family, or for all, all units, regardless of multifamily or single-family, that they would need to provide a proportional amount of bedrooms. And I can show you that text if you would like to see it now, or we can discuss it later.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see the text if you can on the screen of the, yeah. So just to be clear, this, the red line is modification that you're making tonight, but it wa- that, that modification wasn't in the staff report, right?
That's correct. That is the modification if City Council did want to modify the ordinance as proposed, because it did not include this clarification. This is something that staff just added to the staff report. But this would be the proposed text that would amend the existing ordinance that is attached to the staff report. So in red are the additional proposed changes if it was to clarify with the seventy-five percent was only for multifamily housing development.
Okay. I think that that seems like a good plan, that change. Um, another thing that was brought up by Camille was the discretion to waive requirements when there might be a need for it. Can you just address that suggestion?
Um, so the, we did add a clarification that for like income tax credit projects or senior housing that those would not, this dispersion requirement would not apply nor the percentage or the bedroom count. Um, Barbara, please correct me if I'm wrong, but any aspect of this ordinance in this case for the seventy-five percent or for the bedroom count could be a request um, under a waiver or incentive or concession, if it was, sorry, incentive or concession because it would be um, an impact on the development of that affordable unit and a financial impact.
Okay. And uh, can you put up the language having to do with net versus gross?
And can I have a, um, before we leave this slide, can I, can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
Cause I'm just trying to understand, so in the absence of this seventy-five percent applying um, to single families, what is the standard for single families? Cause there are, there are developments where I see in our community where, um, where there were, um, there were um, state density bonus projects and we perhaps have um, eight or nine or ten homes. And clearly you can see the ones that were affordable housing units. Uh, they're, they're much smaller uh, and sometimes they're grouped together. So I see this kind of uh, this seventy-five percent applying to all of the units as, as ensuring that, that, that they are comparable and they're not, you know, there's, there's no identifying, okay, this is the, the, the affordable housing unit, this is not. And I, I think that's what the, the latter clause is getting at too.
Right. So the, when it was introduced to planning commission or planning commission requested it rather, um, it was based on that exact discussion that you were just talking about is the, um, maybe a five thousand square foot house with three bedrooms and then the affordable may be a two thousand square foot house with the same amount of bedroom. Um, and so we developed this percentage um, for the average square footage for market rate unit and affordable unit. So that's where this provision came from.
But then why do we want to restrict it to only multifamily housing developments?
The um, the concern about the affordability aspect um, that was brought up in some of the comment um, letters, I think this was something that Barbara can speak to better than I can, but this was a possibility for single family development and like was brought up in one of the public comments just a little while ago about those single family homes and um, some of them are going to be larger um, than others. But we are still having that same requirement that a bedroom count is still going to be applicable to all housing development. So
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that I see multiple state density bonus projects throughout the city that, where you can clearly identify um, the affordable housing units. They're grouped together sometimes and they're much smaller um, than, than the other market rate housing. And I guess it would be my goal that, that they're not so identifiable, that they're, they're, that they're mixed throughout the development uh, and that you don't have, you know, uh, one that is uh, four thousand square feet, the market, and then, you know, fifteen hundred square foot affordable housing, that they're actually somewhat comparable.
So, does, does Barb, Barbara, do you want to weigh in on this? I, and I see Jody, you have your hand up, but I think the que, I mean, the part that gets, that I'm having trouble with, and I think this is what the speaker has pointed out, is that if you are an affordable family, so let's say you make thirty thousand dollars a year and you're supporting a family of four, can you afford to upkeep a home that's thirty-five hundred square feet? Can you heat it? Can you make, water the grass? Can you um, um, you know, provide furniture for it, just all parts of it? And I guess that's, and maybe, maybe we just think that's not a problem, or they're just gonna work it out, or I don't know what on the ground.
It doesn't work. There's been studies done, and that's why they make those houses smaller. There's a point where, I mean, think about it. How big a house do you need?
Right. Well, that's, that's the issue is that like, like the One Paseo, remember that, you know, that project off of Quail Gardens Drive where the homes are really, really big? If you end up, you could really end up with affordable homes that are four thousand square feet or something, and that, it does seem like that would, it doesn't make sense. But I also, thank you, Jody, for weighing in on that. But does Barbara or our planners or anybody, do you know any of the data that she's referring to about how, how that works in real life?
So when we actually determine the sales price or the rental value, it does not include utilities. So those have to be deducted from that max amount as well as the HOA fees. Um, all those get deducted when determining our final sales um, value and rent. So you cannot charge an individual on these D restricted units. So um, if they are being charged, then that maximum rent based on their income level is reduced accordingly. So that is there. Now, owning a single family home is another discussion as far as the long-term maintenance. We, we don't, we do have a maintenance fee reduction uh, within our, to, to create our sales price. Um, but there are also unknowns. Barbara?
I guess that almost sounds like an argument for kind of a, a in lieu situation where you can allow a state density bonus project to uh, to move their units to a multifamily type of uh, situation. Uh, but I think if it stays within the, within the single family development, then, then you have a situation where, you know, it's clearly identifiable uh, which ones are affordable housing units, and I think that that's less desirable as a community.
Well, go ahead, Tony.
I would say that um, we had many, many people speak um, and testify that they did not want in lieu fees being paid, um, that they wanted the affordable to be with each project. So, um, and, and we committed to that. Um, and so, you know, when I see a, a project that has gone in that I know is density bonus, I don't, I don't, I, there are definitely smaller units, but I don't spend that much time, you know, analyzing that. And uh, I think there are other issues related to density bonus that, that make projects that are developed under density bonus, um, you know, kind of stick out the whole project. You know, when you, when you put a project with density bonus in a, in a, uh, in an established neighborhood that was built forty or fifty years ago with pretty significant setbacks, and you put in a project that has very severely reduced setbacks, then the whole project is going to look a, a little bit odd to me. So, but you know, this is one of those situations where we've got state law that we're dealing with and, and we're doing our best. And I would, um, as the only one here that was around when we did, uh, made the decision in twenty fourteen to round up um, density bonus, or excuse me, round down density bonus calculations of the number of units. Um, we also had a, uh, a similar size requirement as part of that action that we took and, and we ended up, I don't recall all the specifics about how we ended up um, uh, reversing that, but maybe Barbara can uh, speak on that and let us know the, the, uh, what she thinks of this particular requirement.
I mean, I think largely this requirement is more a policy call than a, than a legal call. Um, I do recall that, that the, that this was in the um, motion that you referenced, council member. And as part of the settlement agreement with the BIA, the city agreed to remove this requirement. Maybe, maybe, um, but I do think that there is this issue about the long-term affordability of very large homes being owned by people, by families or households with very small incomes. Um, there is, you know, as if, if the home is in a homeowners association, the HOA fees go up um, and the utility costs go up. So that, so having very large homes in a, you know, in a single family development is a, is a problem. Maybe as a compromise, there could be, and another option would be to say that it's seventy-five percent unless, unless that results in a home larger than some number, maybe larger than two thousand square feet or something. Um, that, that would be, that would be an option, but uh, but I think, I think the reason that the homes are smaller, one has to do, of course, with the, with the developer's desire not to spend money, but it's, but there is an issue about low income households being able to maintain single family homes over time. I think one, I think, I think the more important change is the one in the second paragraph to require that the unit mix, that the bedroom count be proportional to the uh, market rate homes. Uh, right now, the city's ordinance says that the bedroom count has to equal the smallest market rate home, so that could allow all the units, say, in a multifamily project to be studios. And I think you want to provide for families, you know, and have a, have a range of bedroom counts. So in many ways, I think that's a more important provision than the size of the units. But as I said, much of this is a policy call.
Barbara, if you're not getting comparable sizes, and I, I, I think it's reasonable to then say that the, the developer is saving some money in terms of the development of those affordable housing units, is there any way to extract a, a, a larger amount um, for the purposes of affordable housing?
I mean, the, frankly, each home that's built, whether it's small or large, probably is not making a profit for the developer. So I'm not sure that it could be something that the city would look at, but I, I'm not aware of that being a policy that anyone has adopted. I, I would say that generally, that the more, that the common, the common practice is to require consistent bedroom counts, but not so much to require consistent square footage.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't know what we should do here, and I, I mean, I, I see it both sides of it. Like, I, I did like Barbara's idea of um, it has to be seventy-five percent unless the results in the, the home being over two thousand square feet. But I recognize that's very arbitrary, you know, well, and the HOA fees and just all of it, it's just extremely arbitrary. But yeah, I don't, okay, Cali, uh, council member Henze, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, it could be a crazy idea, but I'm just gonna venture it anyways. But tucking onto Barbara's idea that if a house is over two thousand square feet, then maybe there has to be some language that they consider constructing an ADU or a JADU as part of that single family home, so that the size of the home becomes smaller and we're actually able to house another family in, into that unit. Um, just a crazy idea.
I mean, to me, it seems like that adds complexity that's not gonna be workable here. Um, because the, it's being driven to include it, um, ADUs or not include it, but you know, this, this provision, it just, it seems to me like it's almost a separate issue.
I think, so I like, I like what Barbara was saying in terms of the, the, the second part of this. Uh, and I think that, 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 that goes a long way in making sure that they're, they're somewhat uh, comparable. Um, and so, um, I would say i- if, if, if this, the top only applied to multifamily housing, again, what, what is in place now? So they could, a developer could, could, if he was, he or she were, were developing a project where predominantly the market rate uh, units were uh, thirty-five hundred square feet, um, um, is there anything that says how big the affordable housing unit could be? Could they do a thousand or fifteen hundred square feet and then just, you know, kind of jam in the, the amount of bathrooms and bedrooms that are comparable?
That's correct. So today, the ordinance reads that the number of bedrooms of the affordable unit shall be at least equal to the minimum number of bedrooms of the market rate unit, and that is the only provision for the size.
All right.
So what would you say, council member Moscow, do you like the idea of seventy? It, everything has to be seventy-five percent at least, unless it results in a home over two thousand square feet?
I'm fine with that.
Or do you think it should be, just everything has to be seventy-five percent?
I think that, that uh, uh, if it results in over two thousand square feet um, regarding single families, um, and then just the, with, uh, but then the, the multifamily is just seventy-five percent.
Do you guys realize that for a low income or a low, low income, that a two thousand square foot house is huge?
So, but then I go back to the other point. Isn't that an argument, the fact that, 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 that perhaps, and I'm not saying that I want to do this. I'm not saying that I want to have in lieu, but, but the argument you're making is essentially allow them to export it off the project site. So, so if you're not gonna, if you're not gonna say, if they have to build it on site, all I'm suggesting is that, that it should be comparable. But if you're
You're setting up a, a family not to be able to maintain their home.
I'm not setting it up for that. I'm saying that, that I think that it should be comparable, that if we're going to insist on affordable housing units being built on site within these single family state density bonus projects, that they should be comparable. Um, and I think that there, a good compromise could be within the single family, that if it results in more than two thousand square feet, um, then they don't have to.
Okay, so what does staff think about that, that suggestion?
Um, that's fine. So we can have the two provisions. So the first would stay the same, from my understanding. And then the second provision would be um, specific to single family housing development. The affordable unit shall be at least seventy-five percent um, of the average square footage of all market rate units with the same bedroom count unless greater than two thousand square feet. Is that correct? Unless the resulting square footage is greater than two thousand square feet.
Perhaps if, if I could offer uh, an alternative is at the end of with the same bedroom count, we can just say not to exceed two thousand square feet.
Roy, how many, uh, what are the square footages of those units on, um, on the Desert Rose property? Are those more than two thousand?
Uh, those are, I believe, fifteen hundred square feet.
They are fifteen. All right, two thousand.
Uh, on average, that's usually the, the square footage of affordable housing that we've received uh, through density bonus project. The largest affordable uh, unit that I believe we built is about twenty-seven hundred square feet, and that was part of the High Meadows Fovea.
And the five bedroom.
And you're looking at Desert Rose now, those, the market rates are no less than probably thirty-five hundred square feet.
And, and so can you just refresh my memory on like the High Meadows development? Those are for, for sale homes, right?
That's correct.
And so when a low income person buys the home, do they need to continue to provide their W two every year showing their low income, or can they get a, a, a job that's up, you know, upper income and keep the home?
So the affordable housing agreement is um, sets, sets the sales price and that individual qualifies at that time. We send them a request to make sure that they are occupying that house. That is the only requirement once they buy the house. They can have an, an income increase, but they are not allowed to rent that house out. They have to continue to um, live in that house if they purchase it.
Year, year after year, they have to continue to live there.
Correct.
And they rent out room, house to other renters?
No, they cannot.
Okay, so, I mean, so maybe, um, I don't know if that's what ends up happening, is that those people do end up rising to higher level jobs, and then they can afford to pay the utility bills and, and everything associated with a house like this. Do we have, do we know anything about that?
Um, I do not have information in, in regards to their actual income changes over time. Um, majority of our units are rented, not sold. Um, just being more property being sold recently.
Okay, okay.
What about on the flip side? Um, can we cap the market rate houses, how, how large they are in order to have the benefits for some of the affordable housing units?
I mean, I think there's a, there's a problem under SB three thirty, we could look at it more closely, but it talks about not being able to reduce FAR. Lot coverage or the other tools that you would normally use to reduce house size. So I think it's a, I think it's a difficulty right now.
Okay, okay, well, let's let's try to move on from this because we still need to get to the net gross thing, so. If everybody's good with it, let's do what the planning direct, planning, planning staff said, which is. We leave this and then add a clause at the end that said unless over 2,000 square feet. That's what Roy had suggested.
Uh, not to exceed 2,000 square feet.
Or not, but only pertaining to single family development.
Yes, to single family. Okay, okay.
I'll second it.
Or I don't think we'll vote on everything individually. I mean, hopefully, we can come to agreement, but. And so on the other issues, so. The net versus gross, I mean, I'll just state what my feeling is, which. Was somewhat echoed by the questions that the council was asking, so. So I think it's important to note that if we do go with net, which is what I think we should do. That we're not reducing the intensity of land use, so you know, the 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 net. The issue of net, I wanted to just ask a question about whether net is defined, because. There's something that seems really absurd about using land that's like into the middle of a street or underneath a lagoon, the water. Things that are just so obviously not able to be built upon. Do we have any definition of gross or net that that deals with those types of constraints?
Yes, we do have a definition of net acreage in a couple of different locations of how it's calculated. I can bring that up if you would like to look at it.
Or ju- I mean, does it, does it, does gross, does it say that it includes those types of areas?
We do not have a definition of gross acreage. It's only the reduction to gross. That creates a net acreage. That's the only definition. Thank you, Roy.
Ah, okay, yeah, I've seen this before. Okay. Okay, and so as was stated, so this is the first time the city is creating a policy on this. And I think a couple of people, Elena said it, our planning commissioner, Commissioner Kevin Doyle said it that that. That this is consistent with state law and that we are crafting a sensible ordinance with. Uh, coming up with the use of net because these other areas are just simply not buildable. And the city also has really a great track record of having approved density bonus projects. So we're, I think we're in a different situation than the city of San Diego, because there they. Basically, they were beginning to use them, whereas we, our staff said, we have had, we've approved 32 of them, which. I think the staff report said is among the highest in the county of the numbers, the number of projects that we've approved. And then also, of course, all of our surrounding cities, including City of San Diego, Slanta Beach, Delmar, Oceanside, and Carlsbad, all are using net. So it does seem as if that is. A common understanding of the law, and then also I think our general plan, isn't it true that our general plan uses net? And also HCD required us to use net when we were doing our housing element update. So when we were looking at. Uh, lots that we had to upzone, when we were calculating the number of units, it was based on net. It wasn't based on gross. So I think we have a history of of that being approved by the state as well. So. I, that would be my preference that we move forward with an interpretation of this policy that uses net. Let me see if my colleagues have any comments. Councilmember Crans.
I would support that, and. I think that the other thing that I would like to speak to is the issues raised by Circulate San Diego, and I wondered if. Staff could put page six of the staff report up on the screen.
It's down there, just click on it. I'm trying to share.
So that's five. So that second bullet right there, right there, as noted, so this talks about 2, 3, 4, 5. And 2, 3, 4, 5 was based upon a City of San Diego program. What I thought was interesting to note in this is that. After implementation, the program developers of market rate projects in San Diego applied for projects containing approximately 800 market rate units. And 130 affordable units per year. By contrast, Encinitas market rate projects since R30 zoning was adopted, total. 1,226 market rate units and 227 affordable. So it it seems pretty clear that. We don't need to provide any the significant, you know, the 50% incentive of 2, 3, 4, 5. We are increasing the incentive, but people, developers in Encinitas have historically been. Quite willing to use density bonus law, and that trend is continuing today with the housing element parcels that we have upzone. I recognize that 12.6 might go down if we were to be calculating on net instead of gross, but nonetheless, I. It seems pretty clear that the incentives of 2, 3, 4, 5. You know, we're 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 accomplishing what was expected from density bonus law. You know, as it stands now, so I think that that's an important point to make when when Circulate San Diego is is saying we should just go with the program that they had.
So do you have a preference on the net gross that you'd like to summarize?
Well, I I agree with the points that you made, and I think that this is a situation where. It's unfortunate that we didn't get a chance to have this conversation four years ago. And so it's, you know, the other interesting fact about where we are tonight was the point that was made. That density bonus law has changed six times with six different laws. I think that for me, one of the more frustrating parts of the situation that a local jurisdiction, this city finds itself in, is that we're constantly having to make adjustments for new legislation that's coming down the pike within. From the legislator, legislature trying to, you know. See more housing built, and it would be nice, I think, if things settled for a bit. I know that when we did our housing element update. It was under the guidelines of some brand new laws that nobody else had 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 that were required to create a housing element under, so. Between the housing element law and these density bonus changes, it has been really frustrating, and I would. Like to thank the work of our planning commission and the public for raising the issues that they have. In this area, and I do support calculating based upon. Net, and I would recommend to staff that they not have so many tabs open on their browser there.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hubbard, I think you had your hand up next.
Did. I just wanted to make a point about the net versus gross, and you know, I think. Possibly when this conversation originated, maybe up in Sacramento. They were looking at a place like Sacramento, which, you know, this, the town, for the most part, is pretty flat. And if you have a city and you can lay out a grid and it's flat, your net and your gross, there's not going to be a lot of difference there. But when you have a place like Encinitas that became, you know, that sort of took off. Back in, I don't, well, you know, you've been here forever, mayor. You're 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 family, but the point I wanted to make was, we live in a place that has a lot of hills. You get into a Leaven, a Leavenhein, and you've got cliffs. So you've got places that even if it's not a road, it's land you can't possibly build on. And I think that that needs to be taken into account with some cities, and I don't think it was. When they did that and growth, because you could easily have, and I think somebody mentioned it. You know, you could have one acre that's buildable, but you could have two acres that you own. Um, half of it could be on a street, and I think, but also half of it could just be in nature. Whether it's underwater, a cliff, and I think that is important. Because I think a lot of cities don't have those kinds of things. They were designed later. They were, you know, they were done more logically. They don't have half, they don't own half a street. So I think it makes a big difference. So I actually support going with the net and going with staff's approval. Or staff's recommendation, excuse me.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Henze.
Thank you. So this was a tough one for me, and I think it's because of some of the points that Circulate San Diego brought up, and. My hope that we can see affordable housing and also housing built for the missing middle in our city in the coming years, and. I incorrectly made the assumption that if we're putting more units on a parcel of land, that those units would become smaller. And the the mayor reminded me that they wouldn't, you know, we might see the same amount of units. The same size, and we would just go higher, and I think that fear would create even more community opposition than we have now. And so being that I don't think we would actually get more affordable by design houses by changing this nuance. Um, I'm going to change my mind about that and support net over gross, and. The other thing that I wanted to say is that we. We rarely, in when it comes to housing, have the option to craft our own housing program, and tonight we actually have that option, so the state law. Empowers us to be able to say, how is this going to work and how is this going to translate in the city of Encinitas? And I think through the careful consideration of months and months of our planning commission's deliberations and seeing this come back. They really crafted a plan here that's a housing program for Encinitas that we're going to see this affordable housing built. That I think the community will be able to tolerate. So I really hope to see affordable housing, affordable units built, and these projects come to fruition. And the last thing I would just mention is that it does bother me that we would see some outsized. Deed restricted affordable, single family homes in places that might not suit the family that's living there. And so I do hope that we can get really creative about how do we make a house. On a site of density bonus that actually suits the family that we're trying to provide housing for, and. I think it is important to do it onsite there rather than this in lieu fee of moving it to a different part of our city, because we want. The person living there to benefit from the school systems there for their family and for, you know, that high quality of life that that other. More affluent members of our city can afford, so it is important to keep that house there onsite, but it it needs to be more appropriate for the family that will be living there. And I, the the ADU might add some complexity, but I think it would be a way that our city codes do empower people to take a single family home and house three different. Families within it, and so maybe tonight's not the night to incorporate that, but I hope that we can look towards some solution like that. So those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mosca.
I'm glad that I got to go last because I've I've gotten to listen to all of these great comments, and I I I agree with you, Councilmember Henze. I'm not necessarily saying that I want to have it in lieu, situation where we're basically. Moving the the affordable housing units off of these sites and then putting them in one in one specific site and concentrating them in that in that kind of way. That's not what I, what I, what I'd like to do. And I think what you're talking about is how do we creatively think about this and make sure that that they fit in is is something that we ought to be doing. Look, this whole conversation, I think, is really good. You know, we're talking about passing something that that is a, you know, kind of will help with some affordable housing. And that we are definitely a city that wants to see more affordable housing in our city and want to focus on that. And I think that the this this whole discussion about the policy of net versus gross is such an important one, and I'm glad that we're finally having this discussion. And able to to finally get to a place where we can, we can put something in the books, in a in a policy, in an ordinance. That really is explicit about what our, what our position is, which is consistent with our general plan, which is that that we ought to be going with net acreage, which. For all of the reasons that you've just stated, the 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 diversity of the terrain in the city, so. I would move that we that we go with the planning commission's recommendation, just with a slight modification that we've worked out with regard to. The language earlier with Jennifer on multifamily and single family, but that would be, that would be my motion.
Okay, good. Councilmember Crans sends his hand up.
Yeah, and I would second that motion, and. I was just going to say that, you know. In reflecting on the situation we find ourselves in, it it did remind me a lot of the of the meeting in. 2014, when we were talking about a fairly simple little thing called, you know, whether we were going to round up or round down. Non-developed density bonus projects, we had a policy in the city to round down if there was a fractional unit. After calculating the number of units that were going to be possible, and state density bonus law. We thought was not, not written in a way that specified that that it had to be rounded up, so we took action to. Make it so that our density bonus law, we rounded down in calculating density bonus units. And it was very popular, and you know, times are different. We were actually meeting in the city council chambers, and the chambers were full of of people. Who really wanted us to calculate by rounding down, and so we. Had some pretty vigorous deliberations and unanimously decided to round down on density bonus projects. With a promise from the BIA that that would result in litigation, and indeed, we got that. And unfortunately, not only did they sue us about how we rounded during density bonus projects, but we didn't have a housing element that was in compliance with state law. And so while we were able to, actually, the legislature took action to moot the issue of rounding. By putting specific language in there requiring it to be rounded up, so that part of the lawsuit was mooted. But the question of housing element lingered, and millions of dollars later, we have a compliant housing element, so. If indeed, we do get sued, this time, it will not include the issue of a noncompliant housing element, so. I think that we're doing what the city, what our, what our community, what our residents want us to do. We're doing it consistent with state law in the opinion of our attorneys, and I think that with all of that in. Our, on our side, that taking this action tonight with the with the motion that's been made is appropriate.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on it.
Okay, Councilmember Henze?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Crans?
Yes.
Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, well, thank you, and thank you again to the public speakers who waited online to speak, and thank you to our outside attorneys and our professional staff for the. Good work on this. I know that you've spent a lot of time on it, and I also want to thank our planning commission. So we'll go to the next item. I I wanted to ask the council if you'd like to push through. We've been almost two hours, but I think this next one won't take too long. So should we push through? Does everybody feel? Okay, all right. So let's go to that next item, and I see Pat Piat popping up. Are you about to speak?
I am.
Okay, I'll hand it to you.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and city council members. In an effort to assist small businesses that are experiencing increasing hardship due to global pandemic. Staff is recommending that $75,000 of care spending be provided to the Cardiff by the Sea Foundation to administer a grant program. This foundation provided grants to businesses over the summer of 2020, using a model that weighs the application for the demonstrated need. Impact the funding would have on the business and the business's impact on the community. The review committee would be made up of two members of the foundation board, all four directors of the Chamber of Commerce and the 101 Main Street Associations. And one city staff member. The proposed program would provide $1,500 grants to 50 businesses using the same program model the foundation used in their previous grant program. With just two small minor tweaks. Small local businesses are a part of what makes up the character of a community and support any kind is needed to maintain the vibrancy of Encinitas businesses, community. For this reason, staff is bringing this recommendation to before you tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any public speakers?
Yes, we do. We have three.
Okay, let's go ahead and hear them, please.
Okay, our first speaker is Allison. Okay, our first speaker is Allison Wilikowski. Allison, you can start when you're ready. You do have three minutes.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Great. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for having me tonight and to say that as the Director of the Cardiff 101 Main Street Association and a resident of Encinitas, that we are fully in support of working with the city and the Cardiff by the Sea Foundation and the other 101 Main Streets and the Chamber of Commerce. And we are in support of this proposal.
Thank you. All right, and then our next speaker is Kevin Doyle.
Sorry about that. Am I live?
You're live, we can hear you.
Thank you. I just want to say I'm, I'm so supportive of our Main Street executive directors who I know, Lucadia 101, our own Annika Walden, put this together with Allison the first time around, and they did a brilliant job. And we are so blessed to have such talented, energetic young people pushing this forward. It's, and I'm super proud of everyone involved in our city. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. And then finally, our last speaker is Annika Walden. Annika, you can start when you're ready.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm here to, to speak on behalf of the Cardiff by the Sea Foundation as well as Lucadia 101 Main Street. I have the pleasure of representing both groups this evening. Like Pat mentioned, this was an amazing program we were able to introduce over the summer with the support of the Harbaugh Foundation. They were instrumental, so I do want to give a shout out to them. But we are very happy and excited to reinstate the support fund with the help of the city and your council vote this evening. I am also here to help support Pat if there are any questions that come his way regarding the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Annika. That concludes speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, Deputy Mayor Crans.
Yes, thank you, and thanks to staff and the Main Street Associations and the Chamber of Commerce for supporting this proposal. I really appreciate the work of the city manager and her team in adapting the previous Main Street Association program so that it would incorporate businesses throughout the city, including non-member businesses would also qualify. And so these are important adjustments to the previous program to give as many businesses an opportunity for these grants as possible. And so I thank you for the efforts. I think that delegating the responsibility for distribution of these grant funds to these business organizations makes a ton of sense. And it will, I think, be the quickest way to get the money in the hands of business owners who are desperate to have this support. We're currently in that significant spike of the COVID and it's, you know, requiring that we stay at home and it's having significant impacts again. And, and I do expect that it's probably going to get worse before it gets better. So we need to bat the hatches and be prepared. And with that, I would move approval of the item.
Second.
Oh, second.
Councilmember Henze?
I'll take the second back so that Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Henze can second it.
My internet's going in and out, so excuse me if I freeze. But yeah, I, I'm going to try to stop myself from gushing about the program and how enthusiastic I am about this partnership. But I'd really like to honor Annika because this came out of her idea and the relationship that she has with the Harbaugh Foundation and having created the Cardiff by the Sea Foundation, and they were able to act before the city could act. They have such close relationships with our small businesses and are so nimble and creative in coming up with ideas to be able to just stay responsive to the businesses. And I had a really great experience I want to just share quickly, and it was from a Bliss 101 shop owner, Malia. I went in there last week to buy something, and she was somebody who'd reached out to us at the beginning, really nervous about COVID and the effect on her business. And I said, how's it going? And she just couldn't say enough nice things about the Main Street organizations and the city. And she said all the little things that, that the city's been able to do in partnership with the Main Streets, including waiving the fees for the encroachment permits and making it really easy for them to have business outside on the sidewalk. And it was just such a great thing to hear from a small business and probably their most challenging moment of the year. So I, I'm just, I have a warm feeling thinking about this, and I'm really happy it's happening again. And I would just encourage everyone who's at home right now to shop at our small businesses because the next three weeks are critical. And also to check out the Main Street's awesome art auction that they have going on. It's really a great way to get people excited about local art in a time that we can't have the annual art walk. So thanks to Pat for your hard work, thanks to the Main Streets, and I'm happy I could second this, this motion tonight.
Good, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I won't repeat everything. It is great work, and our businesses are desperate right now. And we're, I'm so glad that we're able to use some city money to help them. And it's city money that comes from the CARES Act, so, you know, we're basically passing it through, but we could be making other choices, but we're choosing to support our businesses, and that's so important. So I really just want to say thank you again to everybody for the great work and all the small changes that make it more responsive and better fit the needs of what the businesses need. So thank you. So let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, Councilmember Henze?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosca?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Crans?
Yes.
And Mayor Blake Spear?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great news. Thank you. Okay, so then the last things are just the member reports pursuant to AB 1234. I will start sharing the really exciting news that I was appointed the Chair of Sandag, which I'm, I'm really happy about. Thank you for the congratulations. And the Vice Chair was not chosen yet, so when the new board is seated, they will choose the Vice Chair. But now we have, Councilmember Crans is the Chair of the North County Transit District, and I'm the Chair of Sandag, and we're doing this project in our city El Portal that involves both of those districts or both of those agencies. And it's just really exciting, all the partnerships that can be created with these regional agencies. So that's my update. Anyone else have a 1234 update they want to share?
And Catherine and I are going to be working on how to take over the budgets of both organizations so that we can get all the things, maybe finish Streetscape and some more across and things like that. So give us a little time. It may, may require a little bit of wrestling, but we'll, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get as much done as we can, I promise.
And all the approvals, all the regulatory approvals like that.
We need a roundabout service, Tony. Work on that.
Roundabout service, that's right up my alley. Thank you, yes.
I have a comment I'd like to make because I get these emails from people that think that we should just stick to city business. And I write back to them, and I don't think they realize how important it is and what a big deal it is that you guys are both heading to agencies that so interact in our city. I mean, they can make our life easy or they can make our life really difficult. So, you know, and in, and the inner relationship in all the cities. So I, I try to explain how important it is, and I'm so proud of the two of you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks. I do have a report. I don't think I've been able to report that the North County Transit District did agree to essentially toll or put on hold the action that was, had been filed with the Surface Transportation Board in, in Washington, DC. And that's on hold as NCTD engages in direct conversations with the Coastal Commission and the City of Del Mar about ways that some of the concerns amongst all the agencies can be addressed without having the Surface Transportation Board weigh in. So there's a, I think, 128-day toll. And so at the end of that 120 days, it's hoped that an agreement can be reached amongst the parties to, to, you know, be able to have a clear understanding of, of what the process will be going forward. It's not easy work because the, the rights of the railroad, which is what basically North County Transit District is, we run a railroad, is, you know, it's pretty important as, as a part of the STRACNEC, which is Strategic Transportation Network, I think is what it stands for. And as part of, you know, as governed by the Interstate Commerce Clause of the Constitution, which is, you know, invokes federal powers, it, it really presents some challenges in terms of, of the, the rights and duties of the North County Transit District. So it's been, it's been challenging, and I'm glad we could get to the point where we were at least putting on hold the, the Surface Transportation Board work because as the City of Encinitas knows, from 2002, the Surface Transportation Board is, is pretty likely to come down on the side of the North County Transit District, which is what happened when the City of Encinitas tried to stop the passing track that is currently south of E Street. So we're, that's where we stand. We also, we're going to talk more in detail about the proposal for a fence of the rail corridor in Del Mar in, at our meeting next week. But we have decided to postpone that because we have some, some key members of our board who will be new, including the likelihood of a new representative from Del Mar. So instead of having that person dive right into this conversation, we thought it only appropriate to, to postpone and, and do as much educating as possible. So really critical issues for everybody. Obviously, I appreciate the need for more safe and legal crossings of our rail corridor. And I look forward to the city manager and her team bringing some, some staff report and a proposal for, for how we're going to advance more of those. Because what I have found is that the length of time it takes to get those things approved, there's no time to waste getting right into the next one. So with that, I've, I've taken enough of your time, and that's the only report that I have.
Okay, thank you for the update. Hopefully you can also be postponing any discussion of fencing in Encinitas.
Well, and, you know, the, the, the MOU we have with NCTD is pretty specific about that. But what I can say is that we are currently, you know, with both the undercrossing at El Portal as well as the Phase One Streetscape, and then further north, the Phase Two of the Vulcan Avenue improvements. All that work is going to be done before anything else advances. So there is some time, and so it's, it's not imminent.
Okay, great. City manager or city attorney report?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to announce that we have tons of information on our website about the Lucadia Streetscape project. So really encourage people to take a look at that. We'll be doing additional updates after the first of the year, but there's a lot of really great information for people that are interested, and that's it.
Okay, good. City attorney report?
Thank you. I just wanted to let people know that last week, the Cal, California Occupational Safety and Health Administration, fondly known as CAL OSHA, issued 21 pages of COVID-related emergency rules effective for up to six months. Thanks to Dan Eaton, a partner at the law firm of Seltzer, Kaplan, McMahon, and Vitae. He's whittled it down to bullet points in three easy pages to look at, which I'm happy to share with the city. Just kind of summarize, employers are required to communicate and train employees on how COVID-19 is transmitted, inform employees about government benefits, inform employees on how to get testing and the hazards, et cetera. Identify hazards with employee input, establish policies to inform, to quickly inform that employees have or have been exposed to COVID-19. Report exposures to CAL OSHA, of course, with making sure that the privacy rights of everybody are put in place. Provide facial coverings, physical distancing and control practices in a written policy. Investigate, actually investigate and respond to COVID-19 cases. Report various illnesses and death to CAL OSHA. Keep a written record of all COVID-19 cases, et cetera. So these are up to six months, could be less depending on the circumstances. But I'm happy to provide what Mr. Eaton provided to the City Attorneys Association as kind of an easy way to look through these new requirements.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question related to COVID more for the city manager. You know, when the pandemic first hit, we went into a, you know, there were emergencies that were declared, and City of Encinitas did declare one. And we still are operating under a declaration of emergency, and the city manager is the Director of Emergency Operations, correct?
Dan is correct. We are still under the emergency order from back in March.
And, and because we kind of settled in and kind of got used to it and everything somewhat normalized. It wasn't normal, normal, but beaches got back open and now parks were open and, and they just closed, but then they're back open. And, and, you know, we had closed our coastal rail trail for a while, and then we reopened it. So there were a lot of, a lot of changes that the community felt, and that was intended to bend the curve and flatten the curve. And, and I thought we did a really good job. We're seeing that there are significant spike, there is a significant spike. And we are getting emails again about some concerns of gatherings that are too large of people without wearing masks. And it's my hope that the city manager, the Director of Emergency Operations is working with our sheriff's deputies to enforce mask requirements in, especially in those locations such as Neptune and some of the viewpoints.
So what the County of San Diego has done is they have a reopen San Diego team in the Department of Public Health. And they have a cadre of deputies, not necessarily our deputies, who are in charge of county by, it's actually a very small group of people for as large as the county is, to enforce the various provisions and public health orders. That being said, the sheriff has not authorized our local deputies to enforce things like mask mandates. We have repeatedly asked, as have our other cities in the sheriff's contract, but they, it's an extremely low priority for them, so I wouldn't want to give the impression that they will do it. And in, in the time period since March, there have been no citations written for non-wearing of masks. So I, and I understand the community's frustration about it. The sheriff has received numerous communications from us and from the residents, but it just is not something that they're willing to agree to.
I suppose ultimately this is one of those things where if the folks in the community would just follow the rules about wearing a mask, it would be a heck of a lot easier. But as we heard in oral communication today, there are some people who feel it's impinging upon their constitutional rights and such. So it's, it's, it's not easy because I can't imagine how a lawyer could come to that opinion. But there are, I've seen a lot of, why are you smiling, Joe? There are a lot of arguments that are being made that are, are hard to imagine. So it's been, these are some strange times, so anyhow.
I, I thought it was a very interesting conversation.
We actually have, we're, we're told we actually have very high mask compliance in Encinitas. I think it's pretty anecdotal, but I think people are really trying. The thing that we're trying to do right now is really still step up the education. So two, two primary things on that. You know, when you're outside and you're exercising, you're still supposed to be wearing a mask, and that appears to be something that's kind of gone by the wayside. But the other thing is, is if you feel like you're immune compromised, it, it's actually really, really suggested that you probably take the time and stay at home versus trying to be in situations where you're really kind of trying to dodge people. With the closure of the restaurants and only takeout only, I figure you're going to see a lot of the foot traffic kind of reduce in that regard. But the governor is still urging people to go out and at least exercise, which is, which was good news to our families that our playgrounds are reopened again as of today.
Well, and I would also hope that, you know, we could get back to where the restaurateurs were able to operate in their, you know, there have been quite a few outdoor spaces that have been created that seem like they comply with, you know, the, the issues related to. They comply with the, you know, the, the issues related to exposure and minimizing risk. So. Um, you know, it'll be interesting to see how this evolves. I know the governor's taking a lot of heat, so. Um, you know, there's, there's more to come. I get that.
Okay, um, is the city clerk want to make a city clerk report?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Oh, yes, she does. She does too. Come on, Kathy, you show me.
Oh, yes. So last night it was uh, requested that we. Highlight the twenty twenty-one city calendar. And so on the agendas and webcast page, I have a link. You click on it, it takes you right to the calendar and then as soon as the resolution approving that is um, signed and ready, I'll put a link to that resolution as well.
And I appreciate your responsiveness to that request and IT's efforts. I don't know if you're. A, a, a web wizard and did it all yourself or whether IT had to be involved, but thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. And with that, we are adjourned.
Good night.